Councilmember Comnic?
Here.
Councilmember Colomer?
Here.
Councilmember Faber?
Here.
Mayor Moore?
Here.
Councilmember Baker is absent.
At this time, I'd like to ask everybody in attendance to please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of silence for our troops. If any gentlemen are wearing hats, please remove them. Thank you. The following items have been placed on the consent agenda or routine in nature will be passed as a whole with one vote of the council. Should any member of the council or the audience wish to have an item removed from the consent agenda for individual consideration, please say so now and it will be removed and considered following approval of the remaining consent items. Consent items include minutes from the council meeting of November 21st, payroll for the pay period ending November 30th in the amount of $252,118.92, staff reports, and ratification of windmills lighting fireworks. Do you have motion to approve consent agenda items?
Second. Let's call the roll.
Councilmember Colomer?
Aye.
Councilmember Faber?
Aye.
Councilmember Comnic?
Aye.
Mayor Moore?
Aye.
Next, we have approval of the bills for December 9th in the amount of $652,979.05. Do you have motion to approve payment of the bills?
So moved.
Second.
And any discussion?
I have one, probably for Kevin. The Newman sign bill, is that just stocking up again? It just seems like a bigger amount this time. It says, looking. Seventeen hundred and eighty-eight dollars and twenty-four cents? Says miscellaneous signs? Is that just stocking up on signs or we got a big sign thing going on?
No, it's just replacing our inventory. We also ordered those, the autism sign for there, so it's just...
You usually don't see it on there, especially that high. That's what I was wondering.
No, I just, it's just miscellaneous signs replacing our inventory, so...
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else?
Please call the roll.
Councilmember Faber?
Aye.
Councilmember Comnic?
Aye.
Councilmember Colomer?
Aye.
Mayor Moore?
Aye.
And we will move on to audience participation. If there's anybody from the audience that wishes to address the council, please step up to the microphone, state your name, and speak loudly and clearly so that viewers at home are able to hear what you have to say. And you will be limited to three minutes. Anyone who wishes to address the council, now is the time.
Hi, my name's Kim Reynolds. I've been a resident of Kiwanee for approximately thirty years or so. I'm expressing my concerns over the LRS contract, as I know many citizens are feeling the same. I reached out early October when I came in to trade in my city stickers, and I asked then, who decided to move the landscaping day to Friday? For those of us that work out of town, you know, and for all of us really that work, I think most of us do our yard work on the weekends, and Monday was the perfect day to have it sit on the curb. Now that it's on Fridays, a lot of us don't know what we're supposed to do with yard bags, especially for those of us that have yard, large yards, and we don't have yard equipment to move it all over the place, or garages, sheds to store it. I reached out, I asked the lady that exchanged the stickers that day, who I should speak to, and she mentioned Mayor Moore, or Gary Bradley, who I've actually, I don't know any of you, even though I've been here thirty-plus years. But I did call and leave a voicemail for Mr. Bradley with my concerns. I did not receive a call back. I spoke to some friends of mine who were former city employees. They said, try again or reach out to the mayor. I left, probably about two weeks after that, another voicemail for Mr. Bradley, and I did not receive a response again. And my concern is just, and that, at that time, my trash was not picked up, so I had to call LRS directly. I saved these forms, I swear, I'm not a troublemaker, but I had concerns. So when I called them, they apologized, they were very nice, said that they would, the trash would be picked up the following day. It was not. So, I called again from work in Peoria, and asked again, they apologized. So I asked them how it was decided upon Friday to be our landscaping day waste, for waste. And they said the city decided that. They said it was not decided upon by LRS. So I don't know how long the contract is with them, if this can be something that is looked into. And as you know, we can't put comments or questions on social media, because the city of Kiwanee has removed any way to comment, I think. And so, the stuff is just flying, and the rumors, and the anger, and people are frustrated at the lack of communication and transparency. And I understand, you know, society has changed, staffing has changed, but if there's some avenue that can be looked at, because if the city agreed to this contract, why do we as citizens have to continually contact? And everyone I know has contacted LRS at least once with mispicked up pickups or recycling questions. So, I guess I just wanted to air my concerns in person, because I don't think social media is the right venue or is not getting addressed. Thank you.
Kim, I appreciate your concerns, and I believe that we do have a meeting coming up with LRS here in the very near future, and we can express them concerns. I don't recall ever discussing a change of landscape waste pickup from a Monday to a Friday. I don't recall that ever happening, so I'm not sure where that comes from, to be honest.
Is that something in the meeting, Gary Bradley, that we can address and have them possibly revert back to a Monday?
I don't want to comment on whether or not they would, what...
For sure, they're scheduled, they're timed.
It's definitely something we could ask them.
Yeah, we can definitely have that discussion, we just can't guarantee that...
I'm not saying, yeah, I'm saying that we...
I, yeah, I wholeheartedly agree, we need to have a discussion. Actually, there's a lot of things we need to talk about with them. I know in a recent survey that was conducted by the Kiwanee Voice, the overall, you know, response was favorable, but the perception still with many, many of our residents in Kiwanee is not good. And, we kind of ran into the same thing several years ago when there were a lot of things put on in reference to law enforcement, when, and the people were concerned because it seemed to be a big increase in crime, when actually, with the statistics that we received from our chief of police and from other sources, crime in Kiwanee was down, but that perception, a lot of times, is a whole lot worse than the actual statistics. So I think we need to do something to correct that perception that things are not working out. So I don't know, that's something I think we definitely need to have a discussion with LRS about, and see if there's any way that we can rectify some of these issues and move forward in a more positive manner.
I think, I think perception, yes, but I think reality is, is I've been in the same boat as Kim has, where I've called him twice because my trash has not been picked up twice. I've seen them pick up trash from a house on Main Street where the trash, the way they pick it up, it over, blew out of the...
If it's a windy day, yeah.
And it just, there's trash blown on the street. I've seen them drag down the street with their back latch not hooked in, and it's just dropping trash as it goes. So, there are some concerns that need to be made.
They're supposed to be in banks. So that the loose stuff doesn't go to recyclables are supposed to be not in banks. That's where I had the trouble at, is that what you're talking about?
But, no, I'm not talking recyclables, I'm talking just regular trash. But I'm talking that their garbage truck wasn't latched, so the back end was just...
Leaked.
Yes, there's garbage, you know, from the back of it. So there are some concerns, and I think we need to address these.
And I agree, you know, there's definitely room for, for much improvement, and, you know, I think we go to address those issues that we have.
What was it, a three-year contract?
I think it was a three-year...
What was it?
Three with two one-year extensions, is a possibility.
Yeah.
Anybody else who would like to address the council at this time?
My name is Karen Ragula, and I've been a...
I'm sorry, I didn't hear, what was your name?
Karen Ragula.
Okay.
I have been a citizen of Kiwanee for around forty years or so. Like Kim, she, actually, Kim touched on quite a few of the things that I was going to say tonight, which means I can talk less. I was wondering, in regards to the voice survey, only 250 people responded to that, which, I mean, you know, I know that that's households, and that's not really a good judge of how many people, but, and forty-nine percent of those people said they had somewhat of a favorable, but that just means that forty-nine, or the other fifty-one did not, so, I was wondering, my question was, with LRC, do you, do they give you any feedback on the number of calls that they get? Because I think that would be more of a, a way of judging how happy people are with the service. And I think, for the most part, people in Kiwanee are pretty tolerant, and we're willing to, like, give them a chance, but it's been like, three months now, and we still, sometimes our trash is picked up at eight o'clock in the mornings, sometimes it's seven o'clock at night, and there's really no, doesn't seem to be rhyme or reason, but I feel like after three months, they should have their, their routes down by now, and even if they aren't familiar with the city, I mean, that still gives, has given them plenty of time to come up with something. I just, the randomness of it is, is bad. I know we had a couple days last, a few weeks ago, where it was so windy, and everybody knows what I'm talking about, our trash was all over the place. We had to go out several times, and my husband and I are both retired, so we're home to do that. We can pick up the stuff that's flying all over the place, but a lot of people can't. And, so to have to put it out the night before sometimes, because apparently they could possibly pick it up at five in the morning, they haven't yet, but, I mean, so you have to put that out the night before and leave it out all night, and then maybe, maybe they'll be there by seven, maybe they won't, maybe they'll come the next day, but maybe they won't. I have called myself, and our neighbors have called. The one time our recycling didn't get picked up, it took, I think, they did say they would come back for it, but two days later, they did. And by that time, we already had to put it back, you know, where it was going to be safe from getting blown around, so I'm just wondering if, if, do you get feedback from, from LRS, LRS, I'm sorry, about the kind, the numbers of complaints? Do they keep track of that? And do you have any input in, in the number of people who have been complaining?
I don't see feedback on that, I can't say that we absolutely do or don't, I don't know.
We have gotten some feedback from them, they said that calls have dropped drastically. I do not remember the numbers, but they said from, like, the first month to the second and third month that they had dropped. I don't remember, like I said, I don't remember the numbers, but they were pleased that they had dropped that far. As far as times that they're picking up, I know that they're still trying to optimize their routes, so they're not, like, circling blocks multiple times, so I know that that's part of the reason why there's not a consistent time, as to when it's getting picked up, but they do have until 7:00 PM every day to get things picked up. So, I know that everybody was used to, when our Public Works was doing it, they were done, you know, by three o'clock, but LRS...
For our garbage guys, you could set your alarm to their, I mean, they were there every day, every pickup day at the same time, and it was...
So, like I said, LRS is still trying to optimize their routes, you know, so they're putting less miles on the trucks and everything, so they're, they are still trying to work that out, but they have until 7:00 PM.
At some point, though, are, is there going to be, I mean, I know you said you have a three-year contract with them, but I remember, I was here for the council meeting when we decide, or when you discussed the pros and cons of going with LRS, and I remember distinctly, and I, I think it was the mayor that said, but I can't say that for sure, that said, this isn't set in stone, if it doesn't work out, you know, we'll, we'll revisit it. At some, at what point then do you revisit it, if it turns out that, you know, the majority of people are not, not happy with it?
Well, like I stated just a few minutes ago, you know, I know we do have a meeting coming up with them, so we are trying to take steps to get things ironed out.
I think it would be important, Karen, to bring up a good point, to have the calls that they get monthly, just like we have, and we pull the data from, you know, all the stuff that we have, and it's in here, from weed notices to what have you, so to get those, and to see where that trash is going and so forth, and have them provide that data to us. Because one of my calls was, it's six o'clock, I got home from work, and I go to drag my trash, and like, it's still full.
Right.
And they said, oh, well, we haven't picked up your block at, at six o'clock at night.
Yeah, they have until seven.
I know, it just was a little frustrating.
But is that always going to be their thing, they'll always have until seven o'clock?
Yes.
So, there's, I mean, it's kind of...
Mine was routine at 6:00 AM, and now it's 6:00 PM, and that's just a shock to me.
I know, I, we're the same, same boat.
But I, I'm in the same, I was very skeptical of LRS, I, I, I mean, I know I have mine, but not to hear the community is true, and I think the calls would be great, and if we can get that data to, to be able to understand what's going on, I mean, I think it'd help us.
Absolutely, I'll request that.
Sounds like we got a few things we need to discuss with them.
If the meeting comes up. Thank you, Karen.
Anybody else want to address the council at this time? Okay, so we will move on. We will be swearing in new police officers tonight, Caleb Franklin and Noah Sauer.
All right, I'd like to introduce the two new officers who will be swearing in tonight. First, we have Caleb Franklin. Caleb was raised in Kiwanee, he is married with two children, and has spent eight years on active duty in the US Army, and one year in the Army Reserves, where he still continues to serve. Caleb is currently the Vice President of Sales at Regional Daily News. He has strong ties to law enforcement, and his uncle, Captain Franklin, is the Chief, Chief Deputy Sheriff at the Henry County Sheriff's Office. In his free time, Caleb enjoys spending time with his family, singing, playing guitar, and photography. Next, we have Noah Sauer. Noah was also raised in Kiwanee, and he brings, he brings his experiences as a military police officer with over three years of service in the US Army Reserves. He currently works at all skid steers, and shares a passion for music with Caleb, particularly playing the electric guitar. Very excited to have Caleb Noah join the Kiwanee Police Department, and also report to the Sauk Valley Police Academy on January 5th, to begin their three-month academy training. After graduating from the Police Academy, they will start their three-month field training program.
Hi, Caleb Franklin.
Hi, Caleb Franklin.
Having been hired to the position of Kiwanee Police Officer...
Having been hired to the position of Kiwanee Police Officer...
In and for the city of Kiwanee...
In and for the city of Kiwanee.
And the county of Henry...
And the county of Henry.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States...
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois...
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the position of police officer...
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the position of police officer...
Of the city of Kiwanee...
Of the city of Kiwanee.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Thank you, I'm going to have you sign something real quick. You guys would like to come up and pin?
Oh, yeah, sure. If you guys want to come up and take some pictures.
You're dressed up, you got your picture.
Yeah, I got that.
I'll wear the sad off.
You'll wear it again, you're...
Smile, everybody.
You did, you said, thank you.
Left.
One more picture, one more picture.
Over too far.
Raise your right hand. Is everybody ready? Hi, Noah Sauer.
Hi, Noah Sauer.
Having been hired to the position of Kiwanee Police Officer...
Having been hired to the position of Kiwanee Police Officer...
In and for the city of Kiwanee...
In and for the city of Kiwanee.
And the county of Henry...
And the county of Henry.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States...
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois...
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the position of police officer...
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties...
Of the position...
Of the position of police officer.
Of the city of Kiwanee...
Of the city of Kiwanee.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations. I'm going to have you sign this real quick.
I don't have that freaking out jail card no more. Yeah, I really like these swearing ins at our meetings like this. Back in 1987, when I was sworn in to police department, it was in a small office by the city clerk at that time. It took about five minutes, and there was no ceremony to it whatsoever, so I really like how things are done now, so, congratulations to both these young men, I hope you have great, as great careers as I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think you got two finals, too.
Yes.
Yes. They need more donuts.
Those two do.
Hey, we'll move right along to new business.
Give it a sec.
Yeah, we'll give it a second here. Okay, moving on to new business. First up is consideration of Bill Number 24-130, ordinance approving and authorizing the execution of a TIF redevelopment agreement by and between the city of Kiwanee and Hype Incorporated. This ordinance would authorize the execution of a TIF agreement with Cernow Properties for the building that is being renovated just north of Coco's.
It's opposite, it's okay.
It's...
Just do I have...
Yeah. So, for, for Item A, I think it's on here, but we need to have it as a, for discussion to figure out, kind of what goes into Item A and Item B.
Is this the same, like, we had a discussion this afternoon?
Yes.
I'll go ahead and let you open it up then.
Okay, so, TIF, tax increment financing, it's there for, for a couple of purposes, one of which is to take the incremental taxes that are generated and use them for public projects, sidewalks and streets and amenities and things like that. The other use is to help fund private sector improvements that they otherwise might not be able to do if they weren't getting this reimbursement. In the case of the, the one that I think is Item B, Mr. Cernovich is doing $155,437 worth of improvements, or that's what he would have invested in that property, that's a sizable amount. And what we have traditionally done is, and is to say, you know, if you're going to do a project, we will give you $25,000, or, you know, whatever the amount is. And it's been fairly consistent, that it's 20, 25,000, it's gone up a little bit, but there were some bigger TIFs that we did in, initially like the, well, the Cernos TIF, or the Save-A-Lot, or IH Mississippi Valley, or what we've done at Midland Plaza, and what we're being asked to do at Midland Plaza, that are obviously not a $25,000 commitment on the part of the city. that are obviously not a $25,000 commitment on the part of the city. And I don't disagree with the applicants that they are investing a sizable chunk of money and the purpose of these incentives is to incentivize that kind of private investment in our community. The, in particular, the 315 North Main Street one, they did a fairly good job of projecting out the revenues that it would generate over the remaining life of the TIF. It's essentially the same numbers I would have used. And it generates about $61,000 between now and the time the TIF expires. So they have requested to receive as much in TIF benefit as they can. The question is, what's the right amount? Is it, is it all 61,000? Is it, if you do that, you're taking on some element of risk because the building might not be there in three years, five years. It's hard to say. You also don't know if the taxes are gonna go up or down, so there's a little bit of, of risk involved there if the taxes drop. But we've used those monies. We could end up taking in less than, than it actually generates in increments. And that is allowable. You can use money that's from one property to fund improvements on another within the TIF district. But the question is just to what extent and how much. On, on both of these TIFs, or on both of these projects, they're somewhere in the, in the range of 55 to 60,000, 61,000. That would be increment over the remaining life of the TIF. So the question is just kind of a what percentage or how much of that do you think it's a good idea to front the business? Because they're not as interested in getting that money paid back over time. You know, it, it could be 13 years from now before that last little bit of increment is realized. And with the time value of money, I understand that the way businesses work, that they would rather have that money now rather than carry a debt and get that money later or pay it out of their own pocket and get that money later. So before putting this in the final stages of the, of those two agreements that we had in draft, it's, the question is kind of, you know, one of direction. What do you, what do you want to do?
How much is left to...
And applicants are...
Well, speaking this afternoon with the city manager on this, I also was concerned that if we give the 400% of what would be available with TIF, then that TIF would kind of plateau. I, I would, myself would be more apt to look at maybe 75% so that we are still building that TIF somewhat for other businesses that may come in and want to, you know, get TIF monies to generate new business in Kiwanee.
How much is left in that TIF account? Now we gave a sizable amount to Midland Plaza.
Oh, it's, it's, this is, this is what this would generate going forward.
I know, I know what that means. I know what it means.
Yeah, what's the exact balance today? I, I, James would, he's got the computer.
And, and, yeah, no, I get it. That's, I mean, that's...
Right, right. Downtown TIF, I see, yes, 30, 31,000 in the checking. And in the investment account, we have... We have a million, a million in the investment account. So just a million, about a million.
Also keep in mind that this money can be used for different improvements as far as area, not just in business.
Yeah, I mean, sidewalks and that stuff, yeah, no, absolutely. And I... Mike, Steve, you guys have anything to say?
No. I was kind of leaning towards the way the mayor was.
That sounds like a logical part of it.
You don't, you don't wanna, you don't wanna staple anything.
But it...
But it's the same.
I mean, here's, here, I mean, I understand Mr. Bradley's concerns about giving them the full amount that this TIF would be available, but I know we're talking about two businesses.
And I also see the value and the importance of helping a business as much as you can.
I mean, that's, that's the job.
I'm just saying.
I know, I know, you're, you're... I just saw my pen. No, I was, I talk with my hands, but, no, I got it. It's right. Thanks, James.
Safety glasses over there.
Yes.
I'm down.
But the, you gotta, you gotta tell us the risks along with everything, and I get it on that end of it. And if this was some company that is not a staple in this community, that doesn't own other businesses, then I would, I would say that we have a big risk here. But if we're gonna help a local business owner increase the downtown, do things that are gonna generate more tax dollars, and what they're looking to do here is not just the incremental tax for that property, it's the other stuff that that business is gonna bring in that they're gonna put in there.
Right.
And that's what I have to look at here. So if that difference between 75 or 100% that they're entitled to, I mean, we argued the same thing with Les Cohen. He's entitled to that money, and we gave it to him.
Nobody's entitled to the money.
I know, but, not, sorry, entitled is the wrong word, but he...
It is.
He could get that money over time, and if we give it to him incrementally over time or we do it now, it would help him further the cause on that. So my argument would be to, I mean, if they are saying 55 to 60,000, I mean, I think we give what that incrementally is gonna get over time to help him get... I mean, that's a lot of money they're putting out of pocket here. And, you know, when you're putting that kind of money out of pocket, that extra 25% on each of these makes a big difference. And it's not like we're hurting for money in the TIF account. That's what I want to look at. We got a million, over a million dollars in it. So do we got a million dollars banging down our door now? No. We got somebody that's looking to increase the business, or increase a property to put a business in. And we want to be seen as a city that works with the businesses. So it's my, I, I would say, Mayor, I respect your 75%, but I would say we give them what they're asking for to help them continue this project.
Ah, you got a valid point.
And, and if there were anybody else that didn't have businesses established in town, didn't have roots in the community, I would agree with you, Mayor.
Yeah, I mean, and realistically, if we went, you know, 2025 for the ones that, you know, weren't as established over the years. So I mean, proportionally.
Proportionally, yes.
Yeah.
I think we went 30 for somebody that wasn't as established.
Somebody asked for 20, and we gave them 25 because it was in that mix of where the prices of materials jumped real fast.
Right.
I remember that one real well.
Hey, well, I'm still at the 75%, but, you know, whatever the majority feel about it.
I like the 75% part.
I mean, I'm gonna argue a hundred.
Mayor, good evening. I just had a question about your plateau. Kind of geeked out on that and kind of what you meant by the TIF would plateau.
If, if you're giving out 100% of the projected income, then it's just gonna stay at the same level. It's not gonna increase.
Actually, it will get paid to you yearly in the increase in property taxes.
Most likely, yes, but sometimes, you know, you just never know what the taxes are gonna do.
This is...
I know usually they go up, but sometimes they don't. We just made it so we weren't.
Correct me if I'm wrong, it's based on the life of the TIF.
That is correct.
So...
That's the projection of what it's gonna bring to the city.
Right, it's a projection. It could, it could end up more. I don't know.
Well, for sure, but, I mean, you're gonna reap the benefits of the property improvement beyond the life of the TIF. The TIF is just what you can use to push back towards investors to leverage private investment. So I disagree with you with the concept that it's going to plateau. It's just a matter of when, who gets it, if you decide that this is a worthy investment. One reason I agree with Councilman Colomer is because we're trying to leverage private investment, and if we are asking them to take loans on early with interest rates the way that they are, investment costs that much more right now. So we want to see businesses improving our downtown and pumping that money in there.
Good, thank you.
Well, you two are at 75, and I'm more with Chris. You guys are at 75. I was, I'm more with Chris now.
That's gonna make it very exciting for Councilman Baker.
Yeah. There you go. Bedlam.
I think the amount of money that we're looking at here, we've given $20,000 for a parking lot. We've given $30,000.
You gotta look at proportionally.
Proportionally. Did that $20,000 parking lot, we helped a local business, and that's why we did it. You know, did that bring $20,000 in incremental financing or incremental tax? Not financing, excuse me, incremental tax to that property? That amount that paid that $20,000 for that parking lot that we paid for? No, but we helped the business. That's what we're here to do. And 25% on this amount of money is still a sizable amount versus their investment that they're putting into the property. So I think in good faith, the city should have the ability to meet them with 100% of what we think the projected is gonna be and right on blind faith with these businessmen that they have other staples in the community that they're only gonna continue to grow.
That's kind of how we've always looked at it. We've always taken case by case.
Right.
So...
I mean, this is my opinion. I mean, I'm, I'm on this council to see, you know, businesses coming to town, and I don't want to make it hard for them to come in or they don't want to come in because we, you know, not willing to work with them. And I'm not saying we're not. We are. I just would like to see more in this community. Staying strong on 2075?
Excuse me?
You staying strong on 75?
Not really. I'm, I'm kind of on the fence both ways.
Okay.
I can, I can understand both sides of the comments here.
I think he's saying, does he need to keep talking?
No. No.
I was already thinking 90.
Just as a thought, John, when you could split the difference and do like 87.5 or something in the midst there if you're on the fence.
Yeah, I would like to hear from you.
90% is unsafe.
Bring the whole gang up.
I mean, we've always had that one problem with make sure we don't use it all because...
We gotta...
Well, I know, but, you know, we're gonna...
I'm more of the, I just have the ideas developed. I'm, you know, he spoke to me. He's more articulate and knows way more about all this stuff, way in depth than I ever want to know really about this. So I, I agree with him. I see your guys' point, but I guess I tend to side with my brother because he reads things and remembers things more than I ever will. So only thing I can say is that, you know, I have other projects going like Chris says, and I haven't really tried to dive into the TIF as much as I could for other projects also. And in getting that 100% also helps, you know, alleviate the burden of a couple of the projects I have going on also that I have...
If you don't mind me asking, what are you gonna do with this money? What are, what, what are you, what are you putting there?
What's going in that place?
Yeah, if you don't mind me asking. If you'd rather not answer, that's fine.
Oh, no, I'm sure everybody... Jesse's clause is going in the front, and then the regional office of education is going in the rear of it. Which opens next door to Coco's for another business. We don't know yet, but we have ideas. My wife has ideas. I don't know. I don't know what's gonna go there.
What wife doesn't?
Yeah, yeah. We'll see, we'll see what goes on.
Nothing personal.
So that opens that location for something else to come in eventually or for us to do something. So that's what's going in that building.
So you have a potential space that some other businesses could come in and...
Next door to Coco's, yeah. They just don't need that big of a spot. And so we split up that building behind us to do that. And, you know, this goes a long way. That, the initial, the investment they're saying 155,000 to put in this building, any building downtown, it's just, you know...
Well, they haven't received a lot of tender love and care to this point.
They haven't?
A lot of the buildings have not had a lot of TLC.
Yeah, so, I mean, new air conditionings and all new power, all new plumbing, cut windows into brick, which I don't know if I'll ever do it again now that I know how much it costs to do that. New facade, you know, on the front, all new glass and doors, so... Yeah, it's, it's a sizable investment to bring these buildings back to life, actually.
So that's a whole different program we could enter into.
Well, and I applied for that, and I got approved for that. So that, that front section has already been taken care of, yeah, half of it. So we did do that.
If you have something else you'd like to add?
No, just, if you have any question, I'm here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I was trying to answer on both of these the same, but obviously if you want to do one thing with one and another thing with the other...
No, I would think...
I would think we keep them the same.
We keep them the same.
Yeah, there's no reason not to. I mean...
I still believe that.
Are you looking at me?
I was looking at Tyrone.
Oh, you're looking for Tyrone?
Yeah.
All right. Pardon me? I, I said, well, I, you know, I've got enough direction to put this together in a couple of different ways. And just put it out there and let you debate it on the floor, I guess. I don't know.
Well, what are they gonna say about John? He does have a proven track record.
Yep, and he's a, it's not his first business, it'll be his last, and he's continuing to improve the downtown area. He's a staple in this community, and I think, you know, John is very good at utilizing the resources that the city has to offer to help expand and do the things that have been, I mean, part of this community for quite some time. Brought more people than I can imagine to come see a restaurant or come have coffee. I can't imagine what some of the other projects that are going on are gonna bring to this community. And that's the tax dollars that bring in, the tourism in itself is immeasurable.
I have one more thing.
No, you're done. You only get one chance to speak. I'm kidding, John. Go ahead.
It might help if you sit.
So the, talk about the cost of the, to renovate these buildings. You know, the cost to renovate these buildings and the cost of labor and, and air conditionings and all that kind of stuff and plumbing just continues to skyrocket, right? So, and these buildings, like I said, never been, not have a lot of TLC. So it costs a lot to renovate, but we still do it in Kiwanee, even though they're in Chicago. So I can't get $2,000, $3,000 worth of rent out of a building. So that's where this money also helps out because it brings down the out-of-pocket investment for me because, you know, by rule of thumb, you should give about 1% of your all-in per month. Well, again, Jesse's clause, it also is a business kind of for the community. They don't make a lot of money. Secondhand store, the ROE is state-funded, so they have a limit. So the rent I'm getting isn't that high out of there. So that will also help make it more financially make sense to rent that building out for that little over rent. And that's not just this building. It's, you know, we're doing a project downtown. I don't know if you know about, but a lot of people keep asking, you gonna put an apartment up there? Well, I'd love to, but again, the amount of money if you're gonna have to put an apartment up there and the rent people pay, or, I don't know, that'll work out. So I just want to put a little tidbit out there that... So, I just wanna put a little tidbit out there that helps make more sense for the rent that you'll get out of some of these buildings downtown.
Thank you, John.
Yeah, I appreciate you adding that. Something that we would never consider necessarily on our own.
I could, I could go with the hundred percent, but I will do so saying that I have reservations.
Goes, uh, goes without saying, all of us do, but...
Yeah, I mean, we're, we're taking some risk, but as, as he is as well.
We're taking a lot less risk, 'cause it's money out of our pockets, just a pair of dollars.
Since we go case by case.
Like he is.
And...
Meaning, we're not taking the loans. Yes, I get what I'm saying here.
If we go case by case, I'll talk about myself.
I just never heard anybody say it's just that pair of dollars.
I didn't mean it like that. I meant like, it's not my, my money leverage to go do this.
Okay. I will change my logic of thinking, because John's been in this community for a long time, does a lot of good for town. And like I said, we look at every case individually, so I'll go along with the hundred percent.
That direction here?
Yeah, I have enough direction now, I think, that, uh, both of those ordinances will be on the next agenda at their, at this level.
We can go straight to the C? Do we still need to read off, since it is a motion?
So, that was a discussion only, it wasn't an ordinance approving?
The first, but it's B.
It actually looks like a vote.
Well, there, there were ordinances, well, everything looks like a vote. I mean, you can vote to approve it at the full, 'cause the agreements were there, the ordinance is the same. You just need to direct me to change the spots in the ordinance.
Well, let's vote on it and have it done, 'cause we don't need...
Yeah.
Okay?
Yeah.
Push it down the road, we don't need to keep kicking that can.
Well, it used to have dollar amounts in there. Like I said, twenty-five thousand plus anything extra, and now it could say sixty-one thousand, period. Well, you don't, yeah, if you're cutting a check now, you can't say it was a hundred percent.
Right.
Yeah, right, okay. But I don't wanna keep kicking this down the road and making them wait, you know, let them get going before we change our mind.
So, the, the amounts on those, but, uh, just so that it's clear...
That's what I was gonna ask next.
Is for the, uh, Hype Building, be about fifty-nine thousand. It's, that's all it will generate in the remaining life of it. Is projected at fifty-nine thousand. Actually, sixty-one thousand, sorry.
Sixty-one thousand for item A?
For Hype. For item A would be about sixty, they're both right at sixty-one thousand in what they will generate or could generate. I shouldn't say will, but what they could.
Could, potentially.
Hopefully, it's at sixty-one.
All right, so we, they're separate, lists are separate, and so we need to vote on each one individually, so...
Just for the sake of clarity, or for the full transparency, what was originally requested on the first one was twenty-five thousand for each building, for the three buildings that were side by side. So, he requested seventy-five thousand, and it, that it will generate, if it's taxed like it is now, over the remaining life of it, it'll be sixty-one thousand.
Wait, hold on, rewind.
Say that again, I didn't... First.
The, the application that originally came in for that one had these buildings and the ones that had not previously been CERNOS, the extra things off to the side. It was twenty-five thousand for one, twenty-five thousand for the next, twenty-five thousand for the next, knowing that that's what you've historically done, is twenty-five thousand. If you lump, they are actually all on the same tax parcel, but if you lump them together, it would generate that, it generates that sixty-one thousand. For which they asked for seventy-five, but they didn't know that math.
I still don't know what math you're using on that, but I'm really happy to take a look with you, sir. The, the twenty, the twenty-five thousand on the, um, on the Hype Incorporated properties was requested not out, out of much less of a mathematical calculation, but that was the precedent set by the council over the past year, that I've been attending meetings. Where people have been asking for roofs. I don't wanna go into the businesses for their sake as examples here, but you all approved twenty-five per roof. Uh, on this particular case, when we looked at that, two of the buildings had been used by CERNOS in TIF previously, in two thousand fourteen, when the TIF was gener, uh, created. And the next three buildings were, were not part of that. The next three buildings are like the private dining, uh, the event center, and, um,
Workout.
A workout area, where, where, uh, private, um, uh, you know, coaches, uh, hold things there. So, those are the buildings that need new roofs. Um, the event center roof recently collapsed in, uh, so far more money than this was used to keep these downtown buildings viable. Um, and again, um, in our meeting with, uh, Mr. Bradley, we pointed to the income taxes that are generated beyond the property taxes that are generated, which is part of the calculus uh, behind whether or not TIF investment by the city is a good investment for the city. And so, that's where that rationale came in there.
But I, but, he's right, that's the traditional approach. I did run the math and compare the increment to what the base was, same manner that you used, um, for the other one, and they just happened to come out to the same number.
I, I, I didn't, we didn't run that together, so I, I, fair enough.
But I, I did run it, so...
Okay. Nonetheless, that's what the requests were different. Uh, total roof on those five buildings ran about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which seventy-five, uh, obviously is not all of that, but, so, full picture.
Thank you. So, the math you ran here was sixty-one or the seventy?
That's correct.
Sixty-one.
That's the number we're going with?
Uh, no, that's, uh, I'm just saying it.
Oh.
You can still choose to do the seventy-five that they asked for, which is more than it would generate, or...
Yeah, we were talking about a hundred percent.
If you wanna go a hundred percent, that would be the number, but you're free to choose.
So, so again, within the precedent that you've set with roofs... Twenty-five thousand that you gave to all these other businesses for roofs generated zero.
All twenty-five thousand.
Right, generated zero in, in increment. So, to the mayor's previous point, that was all, uh, an investment in downtown, uh, infrastructure, not necessarily in incremental financing. Based on my perspective of what you all did, it didn't produce any more taxable, uh, equalized assessed valuation.
Okay, so we're on item A.
Yes.
And there's been no motion made, so how about a motion to pay some type of a TIF benefit to Hype Incorporated?
We'd wanna make a motion to approve with the amendments. Direct to that amendment. So, you need to set your dollar amount, and then...
A motion to approve the agreement.
Add it a dollar amount.
And for blank amount.
Yes.
We previously agreed on the hundred percent.
I said it's sixty-one, but, I mean, they make a valid point, we've, we've approved and rubber stamped twenty-five per business.
As we always said, we would take it on a case by case.
Right.
And that's what we're doing now. At least, that's, that's, unless I'm looking at it wrong, that's kinda how I see it.
That's how we've been doing it, going up, up to twenty-five.
Per business?
Yeah. Case by case, yep. The question is, are we going over the hundred percent or not?
So, are we gonna consider it as, it's one business, but it's three properties. Are we gonna consider it one business, or are we gonna consider it three individual properties?
I don't know. I'm still at the one hundred percent, the sixty-one thousand.
I am as well.
Let's get a voter on it.
What?
Before somebody changes their mind again.
No, no, I'm just saying, I think we're, I think everybody's confused. You guys, you, you still are on item B, and then you guys start talking about item A, and they're two separate things, two separate corporations.
Yes.
Two separate...
We're talking about item A.
But then they just said they're on board for a hundred percent of sixty-one, and that's actually item B. No, they're both...
They will both generate the same amount of increment over the remaining life.
I just get confused.
Yeah.
It is, it is so hard to believe, but the math actually matches the same math.
Just to clarify, we're on A and B, and the number we've been given is sixty...
We're on A technically, but we're not even the B.
I, I, I understand. The sixty-one applies to A and B.
Sixty-one applies to both.
So, somebody would like to present a motion with reference to item A and Hype Incorporated. In any motion, we need, you need to consider whether we are going to look at this as one individual business, or are you gonna look at it as three separate buildings and make your proposal in accordance to that? So, are we looking at the total hundred percent projected, which is at sixty-one thousand? Are you gonna look at three individual buildings as they have brought forward and twenty-five for each building? Five thousand. I am not able to make a motion, but I'd be lov, I'd love to hear one.
Had so many numbers thrown at us lately.
No, I understand the numbers, I just don't, if I make the motion, it's not gonna, I mean...
Make the motion, we can discuss further whether we're gonna go with the seventy-five or the sixty-one.
Yeah, I'll make the motion to approve this, if it's ever buildings at twenty-five thousand each.
Have a second.
Second? Is that what you're looking for?
Yeah.
Checking for somebody. So, we have a motion on the floor to consider each individual building for a total of seventy-five thousand dollars in TIF redevelopment.
I get that this isn't gonna generate, it's gonna generate sixty-one thousand, but that property generates a lot more tax revenue. Dollars. For local business too. I mean, if that's what they're asking for, I mean, we gotta work with the businesses downtown. And a hundred fifty-five thousand for that new roof, that's quite a bit of money. Talking fourteen thousand dollars more. On a million plus that we have in that account.
So...
Any other input?
Are you guys okay with seventy-five, or are you...
Yeah.
You wanna do the sixty-one?
All right with that?
Yeah, I made the motion, that's why, I...
In motion, you seconded, so now we can continue discussing, or we can go to vote.
You know, I'm, I'm not gonna, you know, I'm not...
We've heard enough about it, that's...
Yeah, I'm not, uh, gonna challenge that, um, for the amount of difference that we're actually talking about here. It's, yeah, I'm, I'm not gonna...
All right, I think we're going to vote.
Not gonna fight that one.
Please call the roll.
Councilmember Comnic.
Aye.
Councilmember Colomer.
Aye.
Councilmember Faber.
Aye.
Mayor Moore.
Aye.
Now, we'll move on to item B already. Consideration of bill number two-four-dash-one-three-one, ordinance approving and authorizing the execution of a TIF redevelopment agreement buying between the city of Kiwanee and Cernow Properties. This ordinance would authorize an execution of a TIF agreement by Hype Incorporated for improvements for buildings adjacent to CERNOS.
Same thing, just need to make a motion with the dollar amount.
So, this one, we're talking the sixty-one thousand, hundred percent of the TIF.
Sixty-one thousand three hundred and thirty-fourty-nine.
But let's back up one second here. Item A was referring to the properties of Coco's. Item B is referring to the business.
They were reversed on Casey.
The, your notes are backwards. I, I flipped those when I was changing them.
Okay.
So, Cernos Properties...
So, we're good.
Coco's.
Yeah, my, my sheets are wrong.
Yes.
Perfect, was that dollar amount?
We're on the same major papers now.
And forty-nine cents?
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve this, um, amount at sixty-one thousand three hundred and thirty dollars and forty-nine cents, the hundred percent of the TIF. That'll be generated at the life of the TIF.
You have a second?
Second.
Second. More discussion?
No. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Colomer.
Aye.
Councilmember Faber.
Aye.
Councilmember Comnic.
Aye.
Mayor Moore.
Aye. Item C, consideration of bill number two-four-dash-one-three-two, resolution to modify the terms of a microloan program loan with the Kiwanee Voice. The city has a microloan program to assist small businesses within the city limits of Kiwanee. One perk of this program allows recipients to make interest payment, payments only while they establish their business. Interest-only payments generally, generally run on a twelve-month basis. A microloan was awarded to the Kiwanee Voice, and they have been making regular interest payments as scheduled. The Kiwanee Voice has requested an extension on their interest-only payments. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Talked about being in the business to help local businesses, and I think they've shown a decent track record, and just asking for a little financial help. I'll support them, and I'm not asking for anything more.
I think with the track record they've shown, I don't think they're going anywhere fast, I think they're, they're here to stay. Anyone else have anything they'd like to add? Please call the roll.
Councilmember Faber.
Aye.
Councilmember Comnic.
Aye.
Councilmember Colomer.
Aye.
Mayor Moore.
Aye. Item D, consideration of bill number two-four-dash-one-three-three, resolution authorizing the execution of lease agreements with the state of Illinois to occupy space in the City Depot Building at two-ten West Third Street. The city currently leases office space at the train depot to State Representative Travis Weaver and State Senator Neil Anderson. By statute, such lease agreements cannot extend beyond two years without a new agreement being made. We are now at the threshold of that two-year agreement. Both Representatives Weaver and State Senator Anderson have an interest in continuing their contract with the city. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Discussion.
I think it's nice to have them local, I mean, have a presence in this community.
Surprised that's been two years already.
I know.
Yeah, I, I was surprised it's been two years as well.
Have they had any issues? I know, uh, part of the lease agreement was them not, um, um, I can't think of the word, it's...
They can't have any political?
That's, thank you, yes, and we haven't had any issues with that, okay. That's the only thing I was worried about.
I haven't heard anything.
I haven't either, I, I mean, but I don't...
Have we had any...
For every little, yeah.
Have we had any feedback from residents?
I personally have not received any, but I'm just curious, we got any in the city hall?
None.
Perfect.
Sound good.
Anything else?
No.
Please call the roll.
Councilmember Comnic.
Aye.
Councilmember Colomer.
Aye.
Councilmember Faber.
Aye.
Mayor Moore.
Aye. Item E, consideration of bill number two-four-dash-one-three-four, resolution to authorize the city manager to sign an agreement with Micklick Energy for furnishing vehicle and equipment fuel for the city of Kiwanee for the year of two thousand twenty-five. Every year, the city accepts fuel bids for the upcoming year. Most often, it is proven cost-effective to secure, to secure fuel costs over a twelve-month period rather than pay pump price. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
I think Micklick's gonna come in cheaper.
Yeah.
Please call the roll.
Councilmember Colomer.
Aye.
Councilmember Faber.
Aye.
Councilmember Comnic.
Aye.
Mayor Moore.
Aye. Item F, consideration of bill number two-four-dash-one-three-five, resolution authorizing, awarding the rea- Resolution awarding the rehabilitation of bathrooms located at the fire department station house number two to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder. Fire station two has been in use for quite some time with...
Fire station two has been in use for quite some time with only repairs being made as needed. The leaking roof was recently repaired, but a lot of interior damage from those leaks still exists. With roof repairs completed, other repairs are now necessary. This is to accept renovations of two bathrooms in the firehouse. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. And any discussion?
We, uh, I see that we have budgeted twenty-five thousand, Steve, where was this, what line item was this in your budget?
This one's actually located in our capital outlays.
Okay, and out of that capital outlays, the balance available, we haven't had any other capital outlays at all that would affect that, cause we.
No, not in that particular line.
Okay, do we have any future capital outlays that would affect the amount of the balance available to be able to renovate this bathroom?
Not in this budget, no.
Okay, any surprises that you see coming that we would have to put in that line item, budgeting-wise, that would make us overdue, or, uh, not overdue, out of balance?
Not that I can see right now, no, the major, the ones we knew about have been taken care of, so it would be a huge accident if something else arose.
Okay, and are they, what are they doing in there, I mean, I can kinda read it, but.
It's pretty much a gut job, taking the walls off, new plumbing, new electrical, new, uh, toilets, sinks, all ADA compliant, and getting it back in order, new floor.
Okay, see anything else, do I see there water stain?
Yeah.
Yeah. Looks like it was long overdue?
It's been needed for a while.
Anything else? Please call the roll.
Councilmember Faber.
Aye.
Councilmember Comnic.
Aye.
Councilmember Colomer.
Aye.
Mayor Moore.
Aye. And moving on to item G, consideration of bill number two-four dash one-three-six ordinance to amend chapter thirty-five of the Kiwanee City Code of Ordinances. This bill update, will update chapter thirty-five, a lot of which has not been updated in the last fifty or sixty years. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Discussion.
Looks like there's a lot of outdated.
Oh, extremely.
Lot of outdated titles.
Yeah, titles and, yeah, long overdue.
Lot of it's the same from what I remember seeing when I hired on with the city back in nineteen eighty-seven, so yeah, it's, uh, it's overdue.
And Steve, these, uh, in this, the fees and the services, those are what we discussed, and that's what we're up to, okay, okay.
Else? Please call the roll.
Councilmember Comnic.
Aye.
Councilmember Colomer.
Aye.
Councilmember Faber.
Aye.
Mayor Moore.
Aye. And next, consideration of bill number two-four dash one-three-seven ordinance to amend chapter one-fifty of the Kiwanee City Code of Ordinances. This bill will update sections in chapter one-fifty of the city ordinances, do I have a motion?
Second. Discussion. Lot of this we've talked about already in previous meetings.
Yeah, hashed over the prices and.
I read through it, I didn't see any surprises, so. Call the roll.
Councilmember Colomer.
Aye.
Councilmember Faber.
Aye.
Councilmember Comnic.
Aye.
Mayor Moore.
Aye. And next, consideration of bill number two-four dash one-three-eight ordinance establishing the annual tax levy for two thousand and twenty-four payable in two thousand twenty-five for the city of Kiwanee, Illinois. It's necessary for the city to file an annual tax levy with the county clerk of Henry County. The current tax levy is for two thousand twenty-four payable in two thousand twenty-five. Always our intent to keep the taxes paid by the citizens of Kiwanee as low as possible. Do I have a motion?
So moved. Second. Discussion.
Follow what we discussed before, isn't it?
Uh, Mayor, good evening, Adam Cernovich, I just have a question about the, uh, streets and bridges at zero dollars. Um, just curious about zero dollars, um, against the levy, and what the plan is to, uh, fund streets and bridge work, uh, going forward in the next fiscal year.
Right now, aren't we just using motor fuel tax for streets?
We, we do use motor fuel tax, we also have the ability to use other revenues such as sales tax, the income tax, any of the other general fund revenues. The only reason that we keep it the way that we do with the money in the corporate is that the corporate can be spent on anything, but if you levy for the roads, it has to be spent on the roads, this gives us the flexibility if something comes up. You know, a fire station, or anything has a, has something that needs to be fixed or addressed, by leaving it flexible, we can spend it on any of those things, but we do still try to spend as much as we can on the roads.
Alright, thanks.
Thank you, Adam. Mess with that. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Faber.
Aye.
Councilmember Comnic.
Aye.
Councilmember Colomer.
Aye.
Mayor Moore.
Aye. And item J, discussion only, Kiwanee Mobile Home Parks update.
So the contractor, um, did get a thirty-yard container, uh, deal at Reese's East property. He did fill that container, I don't believe he did any more than just the one. He did contact me last Friday for special permission to do some burning of brush out at the old Reese's West property. Chief Ball got about it and city manager Bradley, and he got that approval, I went out there today to see what was done. He did do a little burning, but his idea of putting in a day's work and my idea of putting in a day's work is polar opposites. I was pretty disappointed in what I saw, so, and I wasn't able to get ahold of him today.
So minimal progress, is that what we can say?
Yeah.
At least it's something happening.
It's something, but.
It, it's something, but, and I, and I haven't gotten complaints from neighbors for a couple weeks now, but there was a point there where I was getting complaints on a pretty regular basis, and when I would drive by and, and check, you, you, you can't blame the neighbors for being unhappy, and I just.
So one gentleman stopped me when I was out there today, and he was happy to see the guy out there, but I'm not happy with what I saw at all.
Yeah, I mean, they're, they're just happy to see improvement at all, but is a good, you know, your guess is as good as mine is, they're gonna continue. I mean, I, I realize that, you know, the winter months, we're probably not gonna see much progress, but, uh, as the weather warms up and the weeds and grass start growing again, you know, are we just gonna be right back to square one?
How many more thirty-yard containers do you think you would need to get? I mean, like, honestly.
Probably easily as we do when we do our spring cleanup. I mean, it's gonna need a lot.
I need to do one.
Did one.
Is there anything we can do to put some teeth in to this situation that will get them motivated to clean these properties?
Sure we can find some on the property.
I mean.
Also, just to let you know, they haven't made any payments on their water bills.
And we can't shut off for other residents.
Weren't you gonna send a letter to them?
Well, where we had left off, they are required with the receivership to do this, but they are in foreclosure on those, uh, properties at that point. I can get them a letter if that's where you're wanting to go with it, but I haven't gotten a direction to forward it.
I think now with the direction that we are at, I think we can move forward with it, I mean. We gave, we gave the benefit of the doubt. Exactly, that's, last time it was the benefit of the doubt, he said he was gonna get some work done, if he put one thirty-yard container in there and burned, I don't even know.
A small pile.
Small pile.
Yeah, I, I had to hunt to find it.
And, and if you're telling me the amount of work that needs to be done is like what we do in our spring cleanup, and I've been there and worked, and that's a lot of containers coming in and out. He's got a long way to go, and if we haven't had a payment on water bills, but the residents are still paying him, we're, we're just passing the buck here, and we just need to be thoughtful.
I mean, yeah, I, I, like I said, you know, a little bit of, the neighbors are upset, they're, they're tired of looking at it, if I lived in that neighborhood, I would be just as upset as they are, it's, it's.
Absolutely.
Not a good situation, we need to put some teeth into this and, and try to get them motivated to, to do something more than what they are currently doing.
Is there any way that we could, instead of them paying him for the water and him paying us, is there any way we can?
If they're not on individual meters?
If they're one.
Right.
The, yeah.
Why is it be a lot easier?
Well, if that were the case, we would have been able to shut them off.
How many properties are out there?
Thirty-six, was it?
I don't remember what the count was when.
Can we take, can we take the properties divided by the amount of the water that we receive, get one bill and, and, there's, I mean, I'm sorry, I'm tired of putting money in this guy's pocket, and he's just cash flowed himself, and we're still funding the water, we can't cut it off, because that's inhumane for those people out there. But they're continuing to pay him, and he's not paying us because of the complexities of the way it's set up.
Not only is he not paying us, he's asked, he's had the audacity to ask us to waive two hundred thousand dollars over past bills.
That he's collecting money on.
Right.
So is there a way, and I'm just spitballing here, that we take the amount of properties, that one, one meter divided between them and, you know, I, I don't know, I just, I'm tired of paying this guy. These people paying him for the water and him pocketing it to do whatever he's wanting. I mean, we're just gonna keep getting further in the hole with him.
Exactly, we gotta stop the bleeding.
Our current path here is getting us nowhere, we, we need to change up, we need another avenue to, like I said, to try and.
We're funding his life right now with them paying him water and him taking that money and doing whatever.
Is there any legal actions we can take since he's not giving our share back?
But we're, we're below.
Severe.
Well, a, as I've indicated previously, we, our liens are subservient to a sizable mortgage over all of this, and so it's, the property's either going back to the bank, or it's going to the trustee at that point, so, without knowing for sure who this is going to end up to, right now, it's just a receivership at this point. We don't have a whole lot that we can do until we know where this property's ultimately ending up, that's, that's where the hangup is, it's going to go one of those two directions, but until that happens, we don't even know who we're proceeding against.
Yeah, correct me if I'm wrong, if it goes to one of those at the bank, then basically our liens that we have on the property are just.
Well, they're gonna be subservient to that mortgage.
Mortgage, and so essentially, they're gonna, the mortgage is gonna get paid off first, or whatever.
Correct.
And then, there's gonna be no money left.
Left the scraps.
So they're worth the paper that they're put on, right?
Essentially, yes.
So, we've got to figure out a way to get water paid to us and stop paying him.
Hello, citizens, out there stop paying their rent. That'll get him to come forward.
We, we, if we were to come up with some sort of way to individually bill households, just even to say, we're gonna give you an estimated bill based on the hundred, hundred gallons of consumption that is the standard in western civilization, a hundred dollars, or a hundred gallons per person per day, which, if they didn't pay us, we still wouldn't be able to do anything, because we don't have individual meters to be able to shut off a particular property, so they wouldn't have to pay us either. And, and if they were paying, we wouldn't know which ones are occupied and which ones aren't without going out there on a, on a regular basis, because you can't tell from the water service like we can with everybody else.
Oh.
Makes sense?
It does, and I see the, like, you know, that, but how are, is there a way, I mean, a meter up each house?
Yes, but not cheaply.
All new infrastructure.
I mean, if we, if we get the, if we get the grant, we, we would absolutely be able to do that.
So right now, we're stuck between?
Yes.
Oh my gosh, it's comical.
I just hate losing that two hundred thousand.
I don't care about that, it's everything else, I mean.
I don't think, that's still a big chunk of money they're trying to.
Yeah, absolutely.
Warm us out of.
That's just part of the problem. That's just, yeah, that's the minor.
They're just not moving.
Yeah.
Need to do something drastic.
Well, I mean, our teeth.
Well, it's not nearly as many households as we used to think it was, but.
Silver lining, is that what you're trying? So we really can't do anything though, until we find out where it's going.
Yes.
So, but let's start the process then, that's, that's my, that would be my, I mean, you guys are entitled to your own, but I think we need to start the ball rolling, we gave him an opportunity in good faith, and that's what we said we'd do, he really hasn't done much in good faith, so now we.
Time to take the gloves off.
We just keep him, keep him, keep him down the road, and the longer we do that, the more money we're gonna be, and the more money that's gonna be subservient to whoever.
It's time to do something. Anything else on this subject that anybody'd like to add? On this side?
Nothing further?
No. Thank you, Keith. Wish it was better news.
Me too.
I mean, actually, I don't mind the news, because if he was at least showing a little bit more good faith, then we would just be, oh, let him try continuing to do a little more, so, now we at least have a direction.
Well, that, uh, concludes our new business, we will move on to council communications. And I'm gonna go ahead and start tonight. First off, on behalf of the city, I would like to offer condolences to the family and friends of Rick Cami. Rick was an employee with the city's public works division for many years, and recently passed away, and he, he will be missed by, by many people. I'd also like to offer condolences to the family of Sean Van Wass. Sean passed away just before Thanksgiving, Sean's father, Ron, worked for the Kiwanee Police, Fire Department for many years before his retirement. You know, no parent should, should have to bury a child. In a very good, very positive note, every year, residents for our local nursing homes make a wish list for Christmas gifts. These lists are not exorbitant, most often, they are happy with everyday essential items like socks, lotions, or soda. These lists are placed on tags and hung on Christmas trees at several businesses in and around Kiwanee. As well, as we all know, you know, money gets tight for everyone, especially this time of year, sometimes the tags, they don't get picked up. That is, until one young lady, Kinsley Finnan, along with her mom, Christie, began selling baked goods around town and using the proceeds of their sales to collect and fill the remaining tags. So far, Kinsley has raised just under one thousand two hundred dollars, and is filling the wishes of sixty-nine of our elderly residents residing in the nursing homes in Kiwanee. And not only that, but Kinsley took time out of her, on the day of her birthday, to ring the bell for the Salvation Army. While ringing the bell, Kinsley took her own birthday money that she'd received and donated, donated it into the kettle. Kinsley told her mom she wanted everyone to have a present under the tree. I cannot offer enough praise for Kinsley, that young girl has a heart warm enough to melt even the Grinch's heart. And in the spirit of Christmas, Kiwanee's Christmas parade was again very, very nice, and so thank you to Mark McKinnis and all his volunteers that helped make the parade possible. And following the, the tradition, the Ki, with the Kiwanee parade culminated with the lighting of the Windmont Northeast Parks. And as usual, both parks are very beautiful. Every year, there are a handful of volunteers that make all this possible. I do not have a list of all the volunteers, but please, everyone involved, from the bottom of my heart, thank you, Kiwanee truly is a beautiful community, and I am very proud to call Kiwanee home. And tomorrow night, right here in the chambers, and I was trying to look it up while I was sitting here, but there, we have a, uh, a town hall meeting with State Representative Travis Weaver and State Senator Neil Anderson. Do you recall what the hours are on that?
I know it starts at six.
Okay, so starting at six o'clock, so.
Six to seven-thirty.
Six to seven-thirty, so if you have any questions for, uh, State Representative Weaver or State Senator Anderson, uh, make sure you're available here at City Hall from, uh, six to seven-thirty tomorrow night. And that is all I have, so, councilman Comnic.
I don't have much, um, just, I attended the lighted parade, uh, last night, and the lighting of Windmont Northeast, and I, I don't know, I have nothing to base it off of, other than my own thoughts, so take it for what it's worth, but it seemed like there was a lot more people in the parade route this year.
It was a lot warmer.
Well, that's true, that is true. Yeah, it was like fifty degrees, I mean, the one year I get to ride inside a vehicle, it's like fifty degrees. But, yeah, the park looked beautiful, I mean, shout out to the volunteers every year that do that in Northeast. So it's, it's, it's nice to have that kind of stuff because you take it for granted when it's here, so...
And I'm glad I didn't follow your suggestion last night.
No controversy, we're all good. So, just thank everybody that came out for that. All right?
Colomer?
I don't have much, I just have sentiments on the lighting, great event, weather was beautiful. And, you know, we take, I agree with Councilman Comnic, we take little things like that for granted. Having a town this size and have two beautiful parks decorated the way we do, and volunteers that tire of sleep, take them up, put them down. If you've ever done Christmas lights, you know how frustrating they can be, so they turned out really great and look good, so, all I got, thank you.
Councilman Faber?
Well, same as you guys, but Buryon Park, I thought they did a lot more this year than they have in the past.
Yeah, there's a lot more.
And I noticed that around town, people are getting more decorations up, that usually you don't see that many, especially this early. But maybe it was because of the nicer weather to put them out, that could possibly be there.
Get them up before Thursday. So get them up before Thursday.
Yeah.
I didn't get to see the parade because I have a nursing migraine, so it wasn't very nice for the fireworks for me, right by my window. But, it sounded like, the lights look great from where I, where I can see them from.
I did have one thing, sorry.
Go ahead.
I noticed that there's a lot of our downtown decorations that are not lit up. I saw Amrin working on some of the light poles, do we have any timeframe for them to get those?
Are you saying like the snowflakes, or are you saying like the green arches?
Snowflakes, and the, like, on Central, there's those four corners.
And when was the last time you looked? Okay, I know that some of them, we found out that the connections need rebuilt, but Amrin was here last week and connected all of the ones that they were able to connect, so we're getting a list of the ones that still aren't working, and then we'll be working with a local electrician and Amrin to get those taken care of.
Okay, yeah, 'cause I saw before on the Central that those, like, banner things aren't working, and random snowflakes here and there. I mean, I saw them working last week on some of them, but I figured that a lot of them, I mean, they'd all be working by now, so... Hi, Kevin.
How we doing?
I missed it, man.
Just come up to say hi?
I did. The ones on Central, I just, since we're talking about it, may need to come down there on state poles, Amrin informed me. So, there were about fifty outlets that had to be installed, and I want to thank Amrin for going out there on that cold last Friday, knocking all those out. So all the snowflakes and all those decorations should be lit, except for two, possibly three, that need the outlets rebuilt. But the ones on Central are potentially, we're gonna have to find a new one for them. So, just letting you know, they may come down and we may just not be lit.
Thank you for the update.
Thank you. Yeah.
Okay, I want everybody to make sure they check on city websites, any site you can think of at Kiwanee, because there's so many things going on right now, like the Elksad thing is going on, we, I was involved in the Friends of the Animals, they call it Santa Paws, and we even had a pony this year come in for the pictures, which I thought was unique in a way, but it's a good cause. There's several things going on all month long, check it out, go to, celebrate it all. I mean, there's everything you can think of in this town, so stay here and do it. That's all I got.
Would you say everything you need?
What's that?
Would you say everything you need?
Almost.
The answer is yes.
I've said that before.
No, it's our city's.
I know, it says it up there, most people don't understand it, but, yeah, it's up there.
Okay, I do believe we have some, if you're done, Steve.
Yes.
Okay, I do believe we have some city announcements.
Yes, City Hall and the transfer station will be closed on Tuesday, December twenty-fourth, and Wednesday, December twenty-fifth. There are no trash or recycling changes for Monday or Tuesday that week. Wednesday's trash will be picked up on Thursday, and Thursday's trash will be picked up on Friday. City Hall and the transfer station will also be closed on Wednesday, January first. There are no trash or recycling changes for Monday and Tuesday. Again, Wednesday's trash will be picked up on Thursday, and Thursday's trash will be picked up on Friday. This can be found on the LRS website, as well as our own and our Facebook page.
And with that, I want a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Let's call the roll.
Councilmember Comnic?
Aye.
Councilmember Colomer?
Aye.
Councilmember Faber?
Aye.
Mayor Moore?
Aye.